Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. And the first thing on our agenda is everybody would please stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chris will take role call.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Here.
Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. At this point, is there anyone in the audience that plans on addressing any of the agenda items on tonight's agenda? Besides the other people that are going to speak? The staff people that are going to speak? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and let Chris go ahead and start. Oh, I'm going to get this right one of these days. Uh, yes, we need to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Resolution number two, 2022, setting January 18th, 2022, as the date of a public hearing on an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a community development block grant from the COVID-19 program. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number two, 2022.
And I think Zach, you're going to take this one?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The IEDA, Iowa Economic Development Authority, is providing a special round of community development block grant funding as a result of additional federal COVID relief funding. And staff in Area 15 Regional Planning have identified a project to convert the unused second floor at 311 East Main Street. That's the Supermercado Cerro Grande. To add two three-bedroom apartments on the second floor. The grant provides up to $500,000 per project. And this resolution would just have a public hearing to discuss an application for that project at the next regular meeting on January 18th.
I would make a motion to pass and adopt the resolution as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
City-county election precinct agreement. Recommendation authorized the mayor to sign the city-county election precinct agreement with the Wapalo County Board of Supervisors and submit the corrected city re-presincting worksheet, precinct population certification.
Chris, you're going to go ahead and take this. I take it?
Yep. When we submitted our re-presincting based on our 2020 census numbers, we were waiting for the agreement from the Wapalo County Supervisors. There's three precincts, precincts one, three, and seven, that have unincorporated population within them that we include on our presiding spreadsheet that goes to the Secretary of State. So they approved that today at 9:30 at their meeting, and then they hand-delivered the agreement here so we can approve it. And then it just gets submitted to the Secretary of State.
And we need a motion, correct? Is anyone willing to make the motion?
So, go ahead.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Receive council approval to be a part of the Wapalo County Rural Volunteer Fire Department Regional Assistance to Firefighters Grant that is being drafted by Tim Richmond, Wapalo County EMA Coordinator. Recommendation allow the city of Atoma to participate in the AFG grant that will equip all fire departments in Wapalo County with a new radio system.
I think Fire Chief Miller is going to take this one.
I'll take a little bit of it. Anyway, congratulations. Thanks for letting me get to speak. Basically, I'm here to support Tim. Tim's going to write this grant. I'm in the process of writing four separate grants right now, and Tim's going to write this grant. It could be a big game changer for all the fire departments in Wapalo County. And I'm here to support him. And if you've got some good questions, he'd be the right guy to answer.
I'll try and give you a quick overview. So, a couple other hats that I wear that fold into this. So, I'm also the deputy fire chief of the Wapalo County Rural Fire Department, and they are going to serve as the host department because according to the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Rules under the FEMA program, I can't write it as EMA. So, I asked our board to allow me to use our department as a host to do it on behalf of the county. And of course, they were gracious enough to agree to do that. So they will host this grant, be the fiscal agent, do the procurement stuff as outlined in that MOU. Another hat that I wear that folds into this is the chairman of the 911 Board. And what we've been working on for several months now is looking at what's next in a next-generation radio system. So, some meetings ago, you, council approved some money to go toward the central square software to bring up our dispatch centers with the call-taking. And that's kind of one piece of 911 taking and dispatching. The second piece of that is the radio communication system that the responders use once they receive that information from our dispatchers using that CAD system. So, part of this conversation is just kind of an evolution of technology in that we all use handheld radios to communicate with one another. And currently, we're using a VHF system, which is a level of bandwidth. And it's, it's showing some age and showing some limitations. And what I mean by that is, in 2013, we built the central tower, which you see here in town. It was an upgrade from when our antennas were on the St. Joe Hospital. We're now, what, eight years down the road? And, and we're finding that in changes in workforce and changes of where we pull volunteer firefighters from and EMTs and those types of things, they don't work in the communities like they used to. And our VHF radio system is built, for lack of a better term, in zones. And so they're centered around all these communities. And so when you have people not in those communities, our radios don't talk across the county like they should. And so what we're looking at is building a, what's called a trunk radio system that broadcasts through a network of towers and a network of radios. And it works exactly the way your cellphones do because your cellphone is really nothing more than a radio built on a trunk radio system that works across a network. So we're going to move to that. Our goal is to move to that in the radio, the handheld radio world, and move to a different level of bandwidth, which is a 7800 megahertz. And so there's a couple other systems out there. The state has built a system. There's also another system called the SARANetwork that our vendor that we have a relationship with has. And I think there's some need to kind of work within both of those systems. But what we need is the radio infrastructure to make that work. And so, we're working on some possible public-private partnerships to take on this and to build it and do it at a significant cost savings. One of my cost-saving approaches is to apply for a couple different grants to hopefully gain funds to purchase some of these peripheral radios, which means your handhelds and the radios in vehicles for the fire and law enforcement. And so this Assistance to Firefighters Grant is going to address the fire service. I'm looking at another Homeland Security grant that will address law enforcement. So tonight, what I'm asking you for is your approval on this memorandum of understanding that's required by the grant that basically says what all the parties agree to. And so you'll see the listed agencies. There's all the oversight, fire boards and councils and those that run fire departments that just say, hey, we agree to be part of this. Wapalo County Rural Fire Department is going to take the lead on the procurement pieces. And if the grant is awarded, what financially you'll be on the hook for is 10% of whatever that equipment value is that you receive. Another thing, another piece of this is NFPA recently has issued some new recommendations. NFPA has regulated everything we do in the fire service except for radios. And they find, they have found through NIOSH reports that in some cases, we have seen some firefighter deaths or a lack of opportunity to save them because we've seen equipment failures because radios were never built to work in that hot of environment. So now, there's an NFPA standard out there to build radios to be more suited for that. So this grant will help, will, I'll write it to address that, to say, hey, we just simply don't have those radios in our system, and they're pretty, they're pretty new. They just literally come out. And so hopefully, we'll get those in. As you can imagine, they're significantly expensive. So that's the goal. That's the scope. Any questions?
I have one. And I already talked with Chief Miller, but I just want to hear it from you as well. In paragraph four of the MOU, it does mention the word mutual aid. Is this a precursor towards a mutual aid agreement, or is this strictly just for cons?
That's a separate issue that we've already been working on within the Mutual Aid Association. We, I forget when our last meeting was, last fall, we approved a mutual aid plan. So it's a mutually box and learn plan that's for response. This MOU is strictly just toward the communications piece. And this MOU is null if the grant's not awarded. But if you read down through those bullet points, one, they're things that we either are already doing, such as the mutual aid agreements, and/or we should be doing. Like the NIMS compliance with the incident command training and records and reporting to NIFERS. And those are all activities that we just do anyway. It's just a requirement through FEMA.
Okay.
Did that answer the adequate answer?
So if we do move more from the mutual aid model towards the automatic aid model, for example, that'll be a separate issue that'll come before council at that time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And there's existing mutual aid agreements out there for mutual aid. But yeah, there'd be more formalized agreements to update for the auto aid as part of the MABUS.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question, too. So, in the number nine of the expectations that are asked, it says that, I just want to clarify that, so the rural, Wapalo County Rural being the host will ensure that the requirements and performance measures are being met or the data is being there because it talks about forfeiture of equipment if it doesn't, if failure.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of a hook, you know, to get people to do what they're supposed to be doing. And mainly, that's data reporting. So a lot of this is built on the data. And all of us are required to report to the National Fire Incident Reporting System, otherwise known as NIFERS. And we do that through a state-provided software that we report our run data to the state. By and large, most departments are doing that. There are a couple that have maybe some process problems that we're going to fix that were discovered as part of this. So it's, I mean, that's kind of the silver lining in going through these types of things. But I don't anticipate any issues with that. The other piece is just, hey, making sure that we, our people have our NIMS ICS training. And it's up to us as local authorities to ensure those things happen. So basically, that's just saying, hey, let's pull the data together, pull it in there, report it to me as EMA also because I need to report that, just to show that we're doing it. But the real authority is us locally.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding so the city of Atoma can participate in the AFG grant?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Go ahead and take the role.
Sandra Pope? It's Councilmember Pope, sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Housing Development and Code Enforcement Work Session.
At our council, one of our orientation sessions that we had in December, the new council and myself had talked to Phil about the possibility of, over the next two to three months, some of the department heads do some presentations regarding their departments so we could gain a better understanding of what all the city departments do and how they operate. So, tonight, Zach is going to do a presentation on housing development and code enforcement. So, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, as the Community Development Director, I kind of, whereabouts three hats? So I'm the building official and I run the Building and Code Enforcement Department. I'm the planning director, and I'm the director of solid waste. And we'll take a tour of the landfill and recycling center in a week or so. But tonight, I wanted to talk about what we do in the Building and Code Enforcement Department and what we do in the Planning Department. The idea is that it's going to be informal. There's option, there's opportunities in the presentation built in for questions. But if you have questions at any point, go ahead and just stop me, and we can talk about them. The idea here really is to make sure you know who we are, make sure you know what we do, and then put kind of on your radar at least something about the most important things that are going to be coming up for you to consider here in the next year or so. So we'll start with, well, the agenda. We'll start with code enforcement. There's really three areas that our Building and Code Enforcement Department works in. Nuisance Code Enforcement, Housing Code Enforcement, and the Building Code Enforcement. And we'll take a little bit of time just with each of those. And then we'll talk about a plan that we're working on in that department. Our staff has, we have five staff positions in that department right now. And I supervise those folks. Our building inspectors, Jeff Homan, and then we currently have an open position for a building inspector that we're working on publishing and getting a list for here soon. We have a Housing and Code Enforcement Inspector. That's Jeremy Leip. He does our nuisance code enforcement pretty much by himself. And then we have two clerks, Kathy Shepherd and Keely Johnson, in that department. If you want to chat with any of us, they're in the office right behind us here, room 201, I think it is. And they're all great friendly people, and they'll be happy to answer any of your questions if you have specific cases or anything like that. So the comprehensive plan did have four targets or goals that were specifically related to code enforcement. And seeing, and one of the things in the comprehensive plan was a question about what can we do to increase quality of life? And getting folks to take better care of their property was the most popular of the options to that question there. So code enforcement is something that was certainly on the minds of the previous council of staff and the community when we wrote the comprehensive plan. And achieving some of these goals are the things that we're trying to work on every day. We have, like I said, three kind of types of inspections, nuisance code, housing code, and building code, new construction. We also do plan review out of the office here. We don't contract that to anybody. Our clerks have to maintain quite a few different types of public records. And we also try to do communication and public education, both about our complaint process, but also about what the code requires and how to make sure that folks are doing the things that they need to do to keep themselves and their neighborhood safe. In our nuisance code inspections, we have one full-time Housing and Code Enforcement Inspector. And in the summer, we have a seasonal inspector. They're really tasked with addressing anything that's a violation of Chapter 24 of the city code. That's our nuisances. A nuisance is generally whatever's injurious to the senses or an obstruction of free use of property. But we also have an enumeration of specific things. Grass above 10 inches, foul odors, junk motor vehicles, parking in the front yard. Those are all spelled out specifically as nuisances as well. And for the most part, we're complaint-driven in that process. If our inspector's out responding to a complaint and sees something, he's also going to document that and send a notice as well. Every once in a while, time allowing, we've had a canvassing program is where we've specifically designated an area. The inspector goes out and drives that entire area to canvas and identify violations. The comprehensive plan calls on us to try to establish canvassing as a priority in the gateway areas to the city. And that's something that we are really keen to do. But one person, it's, it's really hard to do anything more than respond to complaints.
Is there a certain timeframe that people have to respond to the violation?
Yeah. So we do go out, we identify the violation, we take photos, and then we send a notice. And that notice gives them a certain amount of time to abate that violation. Iowa code requires that for a public nuisance, you give somebody a chance to abate it. You can't jump right into taking enforcement action before that. So we, it depends a little bit on what the violation is. Parking in the front yard, we usually give people three days. Grass, we usually give about seven days. And something more than that, junk in the yard, we sometimes give 10 days. Or we can even give extensions if it's, you know, really substantial issue. And then our inspector is going to check on the progress and work that file until it's resolved. So, they'll check, they'll, you know, set the notice, you know, go back and recheck this property on the 22nd. On the 22nd, Jeremy's going to go and check that property, take photos. He could send a final notice. He could issue a citation. There are a few different things he can do. But he's going to keep working that case until it's closed.
When you send those notices, are you just sending them regular mail? Or do they have to sign for the notice when they receive them?
We usually send them regular mail. There are some notices that we'll send by certified mail. Usually, those are citations, or placard notices we send by certified mail. And then there's also some notices that we serve by posting. So junk motor vehicles, we have these yellow stickers that are just nasty to get off. And we put those on the, on the window and make sure that somebody can see that that vehicle's junk vehicle and needs to be taken care of. We also have tags we can stick under the windshield for parking in the front yard. And we even have used door hangers in the past for grass notices. But serving by posting is a little bit of a pain because you want to make sure that the owner of the property gets it as well. And that's not always who lives there. So.
Most of the time, do you find that people do take this serious? They will go ahead and do what they need to do? Or do you get to the point where you're really at odds with them and they're not willing to do what they need to do?
Yeah, I think it's one of those things where you spend probably about 80% of your time on 20% of people, right? Where most people are going to get the notice and do the right thing. They might grumble that they got the notice, but ultimately, I think most people are going to get it and do the right thing. But where we've really run into issues is either with people who don't want to correct a violation or people who will correct it and then go right back to doing the same thing next week. So, and that's something that we'll talk a little bit about going later in the presentation as well.
Hey, Zach, I got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Say for an example, they, it was a vehicle, and then they moved it. And then what you just said, three or four days later, they come back. Does the penalty get a little worse each time to give them an initiative to not do it?
So, the only time that we use an escalating penalty is if we've already gotten to the point where we're using citations. So usually, if somebody abates a nuisance and then goes back to doing it, we don't have anything that would treat them as a habitual offender right now. That's something that we've explored, looking at. And, and when we talk about the, the code enforcement plan, we'll talk about that as a priority. But right now, the only time that we use an escalating penalty is if you were to receive a ticket for parking in your yard, and then two weeks later, you were to receive another ticket, then we would escalate that $250, $500, and then $750.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So the next area is housing code enforcement. And this really goes in two directions. The first is our rental inspection program. And we do require that all rental units in the city are registered and inspected every three years. We also will, on those inspections, identify deficiencies and provide the property owner 30 days to correct those deficiencies. There are some deficiencies that we'll provide less time to correct. No smoke alarms, no fire extinguisher. Those are things that we ask to get corrected a lot faster.
And, and that's basically done on the honor system, right? I mean, otherwise, you're not going to know who's bought a property and they're going to plan to just rent it out. I mean, they have to take it upon themselves to report that to the city? Or how do you find out who's renting properties?
Yeah, so we, we already have all of the currently registered properties. So if that property sells, we'll usually catch over time that that property sold and send that to somebody else if it remains a rental. But with new rentals, it really is an expectation that the landlord's going to get them registered. It is a code violation not to get it registered. So when we do catch, you know, cases where that hasn't happened, we usually send them a notice to hurry up and get it registered. And then we've, you've done citations and things like that. And again, with the violations, too, that is also on a bit of an honor system. We don't inspect every unit twice every three years. We inspect it, we write the deficiencies, and then the landlord mails something back signing a statement that they've completed those repairs. We do recheck some of those when we know that it's something we really want to make sure got done. But the expectation is that the landlord is going to sign truthfully that they've completed the repairs. So.
So your housing inspector is the one that tracks that three-year cycle and keeps making sure that everybody's redone every three years?
Our clerks do that. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, our clerks schedule most of the inspections for our inspectors, and they do send out the inspection notices. They track. And we are behind right now. I'd say we're behind by six months to a year.
Mainly because of COVID, or?
Mainly because of COVID. We're also starting to get behind because we have the vacant building inspector position. And so we're not covering as many inspections.
Is that position planned to be filled?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. But yeah, COVID's definitely a big one. And we're still getting situations where we schedule a rental inspection and we can't perform it because a tenant has COVID, or, you know, whatever else. So, the other area of housing code enforcement that we work in is our derelict property program. So this is, any kind of property, residential, commercial, rental, owner occupied, has to comply with the code, either the property maintenance, or the Commercial Property Maintenance Code or the Residential Property Maintenance Code in Chapter 20. This is also usually complaint-driven. Sometimes our rental inspections will reveal derelict property files. Sometimes we'll even find something canvassing. But the inspector prepares a notice to correct. Or sometimes the inspector proceeds right to placarding a property as unfit for habitation. If you're in the house, there's really no way you're going to be able to sleep if somebody's sleeping there that night. You're going to placard that house right away. But we usually do try to at least give folks an opportunity to correct that issue. And if it doesn't get corrected, then the inspector would placard the unit unfit for habitation, and we'll track that. Those cases can be open a long, long time. We brought that first condemnation to, was it at the last meeting or was it the final meeting before? I think it was at the end of the December meeting, but I think everybody was here. And that case has been open since 2017. So, some of these can last for a long time. We're trying to look at ways of shortening that. But we do give the owner an opportunity, you know, prepare a six-month repair plan. There are some opportunities for extensions. There's some things that happen when the property sells, and we have to give a new owner an opportunity. But the idea is that we prepare a deficiency list. No one's supposed to occupy that property except for the purpose of making repairs until that deficiency list is entirely cured.
If, if you have a property that's so bad that it's placarded, does any, have you ever had your staff report that to Department of Human Services for possible child neglect?
I think it's gone the other way plenty of times where we've been called over there because the Department of Human Services has been there. I can't think of a case where it specifically worked that way. And maybe training in that area would be helpful. But most of these cases are usually cases where, thankfully, the property is more or less abandoned. When we do have cases where there are families in the house and things like that, we're usually not the only point of contact there. It's usually law enforcement or somebody's called us there, a fire, something like that. But we've definitely had a lot of sad stories in that area, I guess I can say. For sure. Yeah. And then the third area that we work in is inspecting new construction. This is completely new buildings, remodels, additions, changing out electrical system, whatever. The inspectors will receive a permit application. They'll do a plan review. And sometimes the plan review is something that somebody just drew on the napkin for a new residential garage. Sometimes the plan review is 120 pages of architecture and engineer drawings for a $16 million plan addition at JBS. But we can handle every kind of plan review. And typically, when I talk to folks, we have a pretty good reputation for being quick about plan review. And then we will review those, we'll issue the permits, we'll collect the fees, and then we'll conduct those inspections. The permittee is responsible for scheduling inspections with our clerk. Some projects will take, you know, three or four inspections. Some projects, the inspector's going to be out there every day for a few months. I remember the Washington Apartments, we were probably out there every day for a few months just looking at, you know, this unit's got electrical done, this unit's got plumbing done. And you just try to, you know, sign off as much as you can and keep construction going. But we okay each phase of the project, and then we issue a final certificate of occupancy for new construction.
What, what kind of penalty is there for people that try and do like their own remodeling or building on an addition of their own property and they don't seek a permit?
Yeah, we charge an investigation fee equal to the amount of the permit. So basically, a double permit fee for folks that don't pull a permit for any kind of work. That goes for fences, that goes for signs, that's anything that requires a permit. We have an investigation fee equal to the cost of the permit.
And is the cost of the permit fee based on a projected cost of the project? Is that how they arrive at that cost?
Typically, our electrical permits are based on, there's a few different things in the resolution. A new service is a certain amount, and then openings are a certain amount per opening. Same thing with plumbing and HVAC. And then for building, it's based off a valuation. And we use, I believe, 2013 International Code Council Building Valuation Data with a regional multiplier. And then that's just a square footage for each construction type. And then we use that value to determine what the permit fee is. And then we also do charge a 65% plan review fee for commercial projects. So whatever the permit fee is, is multiplied by 65% for plan review. Which isn't as bad as other places. And then the last area, kind of in this topic, I want to touch on is that we are working on a code enforcement plan that came out of a special session, a work session that we had at the previous council. Some staffing changes and things have put us a little behind pace on it. But we are kind of going comprehensively through the program, trying to model out all of our activities, look for opportunities for process improvements, look for things that, things that we need to change in the code. And then we are looking heavily at staffing in the department. I, I would say we're probably one person short. When I started in that department, we had two Housing and Code Enforcement Inspectors and two Building Inspectors. Now we only have the one Housing and Code Enforcement Inspector. And I think that we're probably a position short there. Asking Jeremy to do all of the nuisance code enforcement for a city of 25,000 is a pretty big ask. There's more than, than that amount of work out there to be done.
Are you planning on requesting any extra new staff positions in your budget requests this year then for this next year?
Yeah, we are. We're really hoping that we'll be able to add that new position this year. And that, I think, is everything. Um, and that I think is everything related to code enforcement, if there's any more questions there.
Zach, I would just bring, you know, going back to what you said at the beginning, the escalated penalties, I know that we've talked about that in prior sessions, but you know, when you look back, uh, and this is prior to my time on council also, uh, when the, when the discussion was had and several changes to code were made uh to try to model us after other communities because of the, the blight conditions that were in Atumwa, uh, such as parking cars in the front yards and, and trash and everything. Uh, you know, the, the people of Atumwa wanted those put into place, but then when they were put into place, there was a lot of uh hesitation, maybe is not probably the strongest word, but there was a lot of hesitation from the community um regarding the enforcement of that, and since then we've made a couple of other changes. But I think that, you know, we can put all the laws in place that we want to. Um, but I think that at some point, you know, especially when we look at uh how we want to present ourselves as part of the, the comprehensive plan, the escalated penalties, I think is really a good idea to, you know, for the people that, that, that just keep doing it over and over and over again. Whatever the penalty is that they're paying now, and, and I'm not going to pretend to know what that penalty is, but clearly it's not a strong enough message to people to clean up their yards. Uh, you know, I, I know I would be very angry if I just paid a hundred, $200,000 for a house and the guy next door to me is devaluing my property because he can't seem to clean up his yard. And I have heard over the last six years, so many complaints from citizens in this town because, and, and, and this isn't a knock to city staff at all, but you know, I keep calling the city, nothing gets done. And it isn't necessarily the city staff's fault, it's the fact that the people aren't learning a lesson to clean up their yards. They're not being good neighbors, they're not being good stewards of the community. So I think at some point, we really do have to revisit the idea of what the punishment is for not being a good team player to the community.
Yeah, I think that's definitely fair, and one thing that was at the beginning of what you said was that it's uh adding anything new that we would consider to be a nuisance to the code, and that's something we're probably going to have to, to talk about in future meetings, is uh something the whole community has to be behind, or it can be a difficult decision to make. One thing that I know that I've talked with Deputy Chief Bange about is that we probably need to not be a community that allows open burning uh in your backyard anymore. Um, there's not really any other city our size that allows that, um, and we're probably going to have to come to the council and ask if uh that's something that you'd want to add to the code, uh, requirement that somebody puts a screen over their bonfire um, for, basically for the safety reasons, right? Uh, and those are difficult decisions to make, and the community's got to be bought in on them. And then the other thing is, yeah, with the penalties, we're going to have to look a lot at that. Every community struggles with it. Um, the state code is strong on property rights, and uh the process for going to court and securing a judgment is a really long one. It costs us $95 just to file. And if we don't recover anything, then that's adds up. So it's a, it's a complicated one, and we'll spend a lot of time on it when we get that plan done.
So I have a couple of questions too. I would echo what uh Councilwoman Monroe said too about the escalating fees and the importance of it. Um, in my last week, I've gotten a couple of letters and um, an email too about the uh ordinances not being followed. But the other question I have is about can, you talked about the canvassing programs. How often are you doing those?
I don't know that we've formally done any kind of canvassing since 2018 or so, when I was an inspector, um, a housing and code enforcement inspector, uh, with only one person were responding to complaints. If Jeremy has downtime uh in an area, he'll drive around just where he happens to be and find things. Um, but we don't, what I'd like to do if I had, you know, another person or whatever, I'd like to put a map of the city up in that department and have them just run a highlighter over every street that they've got done in the course of the summer, until we at least highlight all those gateway areas, but really I'd try to get the whole thing. Um, and just do as much of the canvassing as we can.
So I'm guessing then, um, adding canvassing and maybe not uh will be added into the code uh code enforcement plan too, maybe. Uh, I know you said by the gateway areas too, but I'd like to see other areas. My other question too, um, so it goes into the rental properties, and um I know that you're, uh, you also do apartment complexes, correct?
Yep.
So I asked this because with the recent uh situation that happened in the Bronx with the apartment fires and not being up to code too, um, is there a certain area that we put like apartment complexes are higher on the list because more people inhabit them, or?
Um, I think that's an interesting question to look at for sure. I would say having been on the ground, our apartment complexes typically have fewer violations than a lot of our owner occup, or not, or our, or our single-family rental units. Um, just because a lot of our apartment buildings are newer than our houses. Our average houses are, you know, 1950 or 1935, I don't remember the year, but it's old. And our apartment buildings are almost all post 1970. Um, but I think that that's something to definitely consider. I think an area that we've been interested in is basically looking at what other communities do, where if you have a certain number of violations on an inspection, you're put on an annual schedule instead of a three-year schedule, until you have that number of violations backed down. Um, and I think doing something like that, regardless of type of property, uh, might be a direction to go there. Um.
And I want to clarify, I know, in no way wanted to imply that the apartments here are not up to code.
No, no, no.
I just want to say that for everyone too. I'm just uh with, like I said, the recent news and um the apartment complex in the Bronx.
Yep, no, I understand that for sure.
Hey Zach, um, does the code still say that they have to see it from the naked eye from the street if you guys were to do drive-bys?
It depends a little bit. Um, basically from the street or from the alley, there are a few exceptions to that. I mean foul odor, um, we're definitely able to go and investigate the source of an odor, something like that. Um, and the code says that the inspector has the right to make entry into the property, not inside the home, but into the lawn uh at any time uh to conduct an inspection. So we've definitely, uh, it, it, it depends. Um, you aren't allowed to keep a public nu- nuisance where your neighbor's second floor window can see it. And so we've actually gone into people's homes and taken photos from their second floor window of the backyard, um, because that's also a code violation. But we do, we can't consider a public nuisance something that's unattractive, but only you can see it, I guess that's true. Um, but there are ways that we've looked in others.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that because 20-some years ago that happened to me, and I had a small pile in my backyard, and there was no alley between the two streets, and they couldn't see it from ferry street. So I had to make some phone calls to say, hey, I just got this nasty gram saying I was a disgrace to the city. And I was a mailman, so I challenged the guy to walk with me, and I was showing him what's a nuisance. But he said that they don't come out unless someone called and complained. Is that still true?
That's usually true, and that's what we were talking about with the canvassing. There, there are sometimes where we'll send a notice for something that just the inspector noticed. Um, or where police department or fire department or somebody like that told us instead of a neighbor, but uh for the most part, uh, if you get one of our letters, we, we really do try to not make them sound too nasty, but they do have to, they have to be enough that people take them serious, and that's a hard line to walk. Um, but it's usually because the neighbor probably called.
So, um, a, a apartment building that has 20 units and one dumpster for the 20 units, and this big strong wind that we just had a couple of weeks ago blew that trash all over the, I mean, the neighborhood.
Hypothetically, I think, right?
No, it actually happened. Um, I mean, but that's considered a nuisance, right?
It's definitely a nuisance when the trash is blowing. Um, I think that our code could probably stand to be more clear about how much dumpster space is required for multi-residential uh projects. I don't think we have anything right now in the code, um, that says how much, like this many cubic feet or something would be provided per unit. I think that's something we should probably look at. Um, especially, we're running into it, I can think of two examples. One is that one, I can also think of a trailer park that has an issue uh with not uh having enough dumpster space and not having folks put stuff into the dumpsters.
Thank you.
And I just kind of want to publicly go ahead and echo what's been set up here tonight, because, you know, we talk about needing police protection and fire protection. I think we need to have adequate enforcement in the community, because like Councilman Monroe said, you buy a nice home and you get it bought in a neighborhood where nobody else is taking care of their property. If we don't enforce these ordinances, then why do we even have them? Because I know that's kind of a hard-nosed approach, but we have several neighborhoods in Atumwa. I grew up here, and a lot of those neighborhoods have really deteriorated over the years, and they used to be really nice neighborhoods. And I don't think there's been near the emphasis put on enforcement, so I'm glad to hear that you're planning on hiring another person.
Yeah, and, and I think canvassing helps with that too, because we've got neighborhoods where people have just kind of maybe given up on thinking that their neighbor's going to follow the rules, so we don't even know that that's there anymore because they've stopped calling. So, um, hopefully the canvassing will be a part of solving that too.
I got, I got one question. I got, so have you guys looked at like an adopted neighborhood or a, a neighborhood pride type thing? Or, you know, local, you know, you can say, okay, this is, I, I live in this neighborhood, I want to adopt this neighborhood. I want to go out and help my neighbors clean up. Um, maybe they'll get notified if there's a, you know, something that they can help with in the neighborhood or whatever. You guys looked at anything like that?
So you'll actually see in the housing section, one of the goals in the housing study uh is to strengthen neighborhood association, neighborhood groups to build a sense of place and pride in folks' neighborhood. Atumwa doesn't have a very strong neighborhood culture, um, kind of just a north side, south side, west side, east end, and that's kind of where it stops, uh, with a few exceptions, right? And so if we can try to uh get people bought into a neighborhood association or a neighborhood group where they kind of take on those things. I think Make Atumwa Shine could be a vehicle for that. Make Atumwa Shine does our annual cleanup event. Um, and if maybe that were to be built up a little bit more, that could be a vehicle for, um, you know, we set up neighborhood groups, and then those neighborhood groups can kind of come together and collaborate with each other at that, at that group. So, um, yeah, that's something that I'm interested in seeing us do for sure.
Well, I will tell you Zach, the, the times that I've been on both sides of this, where I've gotten the notice, where I've, I've asked you guys to, your, your staff has done a really wonderful job, so I want to, I want to tell you, I appreciate them, and, and I appreciate you giving us this uh presentation here tonight. I've learned things that I didn't even know, so.
Thank you, I, I really appreciate it. Then it is, it's our staff, they're, they're great. Um, we had a really great building inspector with Doug Mays, and he retired. And uh, I'm sure a lot of people were nervous, but we've filled that position well. We've got uh Jeff Homann's a great building inspector, and then Jeremy's just absolutely gung ho and doing the code enforcement inspections. Our clerks, um, our great Keely came from Bloomfield where she'd been working uh in the city offices there, and she's just fit in perfectly. And Kathy's been here for a good while now, and she's really familiar, so it's a, it's a great team. Uh, I encourage everybody to get to know them, they're, they're really responsive.
And I think your idea of having these neighborhood coalitions makes some sense, but here again, it goes back to the enforcement. If those neighborhood coalitions don't feel like anything's going to get done on stuff that they've identified that needs to be improved in their neighborhood, you're not going to get the buy-in and people aren't going to keep at it.
Yep.
So I mean, it does go back to the ability to enforce all this stuff.
Yep, and, and I think the neighborhood association simply drive that. We used to have, she was actually just one lady, but she called herself the West End Watch, and she used to call in complaints from the West End Watch, and those complaints have gone slowly down, and we've seen a lot of progress in like Benton Street and Clay Street, where she used to do a lot of patrols for us. Um, and I, we haven't gotten a complaint from her for a while, so I hope she's still well. Um, but I think that something like that could definitely be part of it too. Just folks that decide that when they're out taking a walk or whatever, that they're going to write that down, so. All right, we're going to move on uh to talk about housing. I think just about everybody was at the housing study presentation. A couple weren't, okay. So I've got some data from that. I won't spend tons and tons of time on it, but I will uh go through that a little bit, uh, talk about some of the recommendations that are there, um, touch on some existing programs we have, but then also talk about some proposals that we're making uh to uh execute on some of the things in that study. Um, first bit though with staffing, um, in the planning department, we've got two of us. Um, Jake Rush is the new housing and zoning coordinator, that's a new position uh that we created. It's uh replaces the old planner one position, uh, and it basically gives Jake a bigger uh kind of portfolio. So he's got a few more things than just planning that he does now, um, but he works on zoning code enforcement. Um, he does work in uh some of our policymaking around housing, but he also works on um doing a little bit of housing code enforcement. He's going to step in and carry out housing code inspections when the inspector can't make it, or when we're getting really pined, those sorts of things. Um, he's also going to probably work a few placard files, um, and he's going to make sure that he runs our uh um, derelict property condemnation programs and some other programs we've got. And then of course, uh, me, and I just benefit from all their hard work. Uh, so our housing study, uh, the Legacy Foundation paid for the 2021 Atumwa Housing Plan. I don't know if they're going to change that and call it the 2022 Atumwa Housing Plan now that it's going to get adopted this year. Um, but either way, it's a great study, um, and I want to just go through some of the data there. This is from the survey, um, it showed us that first of all, a lot of our different uh families or types of families in the community aren't having their housing needs met. Um, childless uh young couples, up to multi-generational families, uh, over 50% for all those groups that they weren't having their uh housing needs met. Um, there was also some interesting data on uh seniors, uh, and this I think is everyone. Uh, what they said they thought would be the best options for seniors, um, but there was also a, a way to look at that survey data just for seniors. And so I think the study's going to add a little bit of explaining specifically what seniors wanted, but there was a wide variety. Uh, and people definitely were interested in uh maybe ways of staying in the home or staying independent, but not necessarily in the same home. So downsizing condos, some of those options, uh, as well as assisted and other things. Um, and then something that we also thought was interesting is uh asking folks in the survey what types of products we need. Um, we didn't see a lot of support for large lot, single-family development, but we saw a lot of support for just about everything else, even 80% for apartments, um, which was kind of an outlier in terms of uh what the consultant usually sees uh on these types of surveys. So there's uh definitely a lot of interest in um a little bit more density or um in those top two areas, uh, just mid-size, accessible to uh working families, single-family homes. So, uh, I think also, yeah, in the survey, we also had a question asking about support. We did see there that they, there was a, a large support for more public funding for code enforcement, public funding for moving dilapidated housing, and public for, uh, funding for housing rehab. Uh, 60% felt that there was under supply of buildable lots in Atumwa, and they did see that our infill lots um have an issue with, they're not desirable uh due to their size and location. Uh, we also did specifically do a survey of landlords, uh, and they reported in their rental units only a 4.3% vacancy rate. Um, so our census data says that Atumwa has an 11% vacancy rate. When owner occupied homes go up for sale, we know they sell fast right now, and we know that our landlords are reporting low vacancy. So what that tells us is there's still a lot of vacant because of their condition homes out there on the market. So abandoned or not suitable for habitation uh vacant homes. Also 70% of our landlords said that it takes less than two weeks to find a new tenant uh for a vacant unit, and 85% of our landlords said that they don't accept any uh rental assistance vouchers or federal housing choice vouchers. Um, and uh, that's definitely concerning uh in the sense that we have vouchers that are available for folks and they can't find a place to live. Um, and I know that our landlords have expressed interest in possibly participating in those programs, but they're looking at ways of buying down risk. Um, they're concerned that, you know, what if a tenant wrecks a unit or something like that? And uh, you know, that program can only work if, if folks will accept those vouchers, looking at ways of uh making it easier for landlords to take them.
Real quick, there's that, would that have something to do with the statistics on the housing shortage? Is it maybe not so much a shortage, but a shortage of people that are willing to do the lower-end housing?
I think that there's, it's probably a little bit of both, and we'll see a couple of things that pointed a, a general shortage anyway. Uh, but I do think there is an issue where um folks are cost burdened who either could get a voucher but can't find a place to use it, and they're cost burdened for that reason. Um, or uh, you know, folks that are um, I, I, there's a number of reasons that that can have an adverse impact, but basically folks who have those vouchers, we'd like to have a chance for them to use them. Um, it's, it's a good program, uh, as long as the trust is there, because I mean, it's old, it's a designed to be a federal subsidy for landlords um, to subsidize the unit, right? So, um, really uh, building and buying in that trust would be beneficial, I think, to our low-income folks, and it would maybe make it easier to house our lower-income folks without having to go out and necessarily build a lot of new units, so.
Do we know, are we seeing an issue where people aren't able to get housing because they're trying to use the voucher and we just don't have the housing for them?
I, my understanding is that that does happen, yeah. Um, I think we've got a waitlist at the Housing Authority, and they're pretty much who takes them, um, so.
But definitely for the landlords to understand that a lot of people may have to utilize the vouchers because they're just starting over. So to be able to be in that situation to help. a family out because we're gonna possibly get women and children's shelter here, they may need that initial startup.
Yeah, I, I agree with you 100%. I think it's a good program. And I think that if we can find ways of, of building the trust and getting the folks invested in it, that I think it'd be beneficial for helping us get our lower income housing shortage addressed a little better.
And I, and I do think at least historically, there have been some landlords that don't want to participate in the rental assistance voucher program. Because those guidelines are pretty stringent what they have to do in order to get that voucher money. And some of them just frankly don't want to make the investment in the property if they don't absolutely have to. So I think there is a piece of that that gets folded into that, too.
Yeah. And I think that that's not as big a factor anymore, just because our housing code inspections are just about as strenuous as the Section 8 inspection at this point. We've adopted the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. We're going to upgrade that to the 2021 here soon. And there's very few things that they're going to look for that we don't meet. There might be things that just by nature of the building, it's supposed to be a bedroom of this size. That may never qualify and might satisfy for us, but other than that, yeah.
Zach, I want to go back to your infill lots here.
Yes.
So the infill lots, when we tear down a house, are, are those able to be built on after we get the houses tore down?
So most of the time when we tear down a house, that lot still belongs to the person who owned it before we tore it down. We'll assess the costs for that usually to the property tax. And those will just usually not go paid. So over time, we'll eventually recover those lots on tax sale, basically. But that's a slow process. So we've come to own them that way. Sometimes we have not even tried to own the ones when they come up that way. Then they've just sat there for a while because, you know, we didn't want to take the mowing responsibility, even though we were probably mowing it and assessing it taxes anyway. So I think looking at that system to try to get more of those lots would be good. When you do a 657A, it's a much longer process. That's when we take title to abandoned property in court. It's a much longer process, but then we have a clean title. And so we've sometimes done that to tear down houses just, and then we've owned that lot afterwards. So there's more options to look at on the table. But for the most part, even when we do come to own them, those neighborhoods, folks were saying in the survey or in the focus groups, that they didn't think that those lots were necessarily desirable to build on. Which was probably contributed to why that property was also not being maintained.
When the, when we, when those lots are torn down, like so the house on Mary Street, for instance. So once that house is tore down, that owner still owns that lot. Once that, once that house is down and we assess that taxes, if that guy decides to sell that property to somebody else, are they able to build on that lot?
Yeah, they, they would have to pay those back taxes.
Right, as long as all that's paid up.
We've forgiven those taxes even. But yeah, somebody'd be able to build on that. And in fact, it'd be a little bit easier to build on it because the sewer is just run there. It's just capped. And there's usually a box there for the water already. So you don't have to pay as much to attach the water. So yeah, they're, they're great.
There's no codes enforcing that we can't, they can't build on. Because that, that's my only concern is.
Other issue, and that's something we're going to look at with coming out of the housing study is that some of those lots are also too small to build on now. There's not been a house on that lot for a number of years. Now that lot's only 45 feet wide. Even though every other lot on, or lot on that same block is 45 feet wide, the code says, well, this is an R2 zone. You've got to be at least 60 feet wide. And so for that reason, they've not been buildable without a variance. So we'd like to to probably liberalize that a little bit to make it easier to build on those.
You're looking into fixing that issue?
Yeah, the, the RDG did a code review memo as part of the housing study. And we're going to go through that memo and try to just item by item create an ordinance that'll adopt the things that they think we need to do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Or at least the ones that we think are good ideas. Which I think we're all. Here's a little more data as well. Our average has been, that first top graph there is how many residential building permits we've done over the years. We've averaged only five single family homes a year while demolishing an average of four every year for this area they looked at. So that's only a net of one single family home a year. And that's obviously not keeping pace with even our regular population growth. We also have lower values than our peer communities. That's the graph on the bottom. We're all the way to the right. We're seeing steady improvement, but we're still below Oskaloosa, Muscatine, Fort Dodge, Quentin, Arlington. And then they did note that sales prices increased from 21% from 2019 to 2020. And I would imagine that that's something that's increased again in this last year because the market really has been very hot. And then it does have some interesting kind of data about cost burden. For renters especially, our home values have increased 9% in the last decade, but rent has gone up 28%. So that means that renters are going to be more cost, or cost burdened probably than homeowners. Also, housing cost as a percent of income increased for renters over the last decade. And the largest share of cost burden renters are on the south and east sides of town. There's actually a map in the study that takes each census tract and shows us how many renters are cost burdened in each of those neighborhoods. And then this is kind of the big graph for the consultant. They were really interested in this one. This is the graph that they look at to kind of show what they call the missing middle in housing. So the, the axis on the bottom is how many families there are in each of these income categories. And then the or I'm sorry, that's the, the line is how many households there are in each of those income categories. And then the bars are how many actual units that are affordable to people in those income categories we have on the market. So we have quite a few units that are affordable to lower income folks. But we don't have enough units that are affordable in some of these higher income categories. And as a result of that, some higher earners are competing with lower earners for the same units. So that means the price goes up. It also means that the folks that are living, that are taking the units that it would be probably necessary for a lower income family, they're taking those units. And they're not satisfied with them. So we're, it's kind of working in two negative directions. We've got folks that are not satisfied with the home they're in. And then we've got folks that would, you know, feel to be in that home, but they can't afford it because the market's pricing them out. So that's sort of the challenge then. And that's what the study looked at was how can we build up that middle? And they kind of look at how can we build middle income, affordable to middle income housing? And then also how can we use medium density to build faster and build better quality in a more cost effective or cost engineered way? And then this is the projected need over 10 years for units. So it's a total of just under 500 housing units it projects we need. It breaks them out into each category. And we're going to add to the plan soon, a statement that talks about the Benita project, but the Benita project was about 108 units. And it's going to capture some of this renter occupied demand in the affordable and market rate. Possibly even some of that low rate, but probably not necessarily. It's mostly going to be that moderate and some of that market rate. It's going to capture some of that demand. So it does relieve some of the pressure there. But there is still existing, or we're still projected demand in those categories, even beyond that one project. Also, there was a question that Councilman Rowe had asked about, and I can share some more data moving forward, but we do keep an inventory of our city owned vacant lots. This is all of our vacant lots in East Atumwa. On a map here. There's currently 45 lots listed on our inventory that's published on the website. And the lots average about 50 feet wide. Many of them are suitable for development, but would require a variance in the current codes. That's why we're looking at reviewing that code. And there's also a lot of those, a lot of those lots are challenged in other ways. So we definitely don't have, you know, a huge inventory of infill lots, but we do have some things. We do have some things that are close together which provide us an opportunity to make maybe a neighborhood size impact. But it's it's definitely something that we're going to have to look at. How can we capture maybe more? How can we get some of those lots where we've torn down houses, get those faster? How can we find maybe Rippling Waters gets involved in buying low cost vacant lots from people who are behind on taxes on them or have nothing they're using their vacant lot for, but are privately owned? To, to get the, the really good lots for infill, we'll probably have to do a little bit more than just use our existing inventory.
Since some of those are 50 feet wide or less and require a variance, do you ever have any of the existing homeowners in those neighborhoods say, hey, I'd like to buy that lot to just increase my property? Yeah, I mean, that could be an option for some of that if they were willing to do that.
Yeah. And, and we did with the last council adopt a policy to try to reserve lots that are buildable. Even when that lot is not necessarily buildable with the current code, but it's 85% buildable. Where we've tried to reserve those lots for folks that are going to build on them so that we don't lose the opportunity to use that lot right away. But certainly in terms of reducing our mowing costs. Or, you know, giving somebody a place they can build a garage, things like that. We've definitely divested of lots in that way. We've tried to move probably in a less generous direction with our lot sales recently. And I think that's probably a good direction, but we're going to have to keep an eye on it because we don't want to just own them and mow them and never do anything with them. And then if there's anything else that you kind of want me to address more with the infill lots, I know that was a request that you made, Councilman Rowe.
No, that's good for now.
Okay. And then I do just kind of want to summarize here with the data from the housing study. Our housing stock isn't meeting the needs of residents in most categories. It contributes to property value issue that affects all of our government services. If we have lower values than our peer communities, we have to have a higher levy or we have to have less quality resort or programs and, and things like that. So there's trade offs that happen because of our housing stock and our value issue. Also, many Atumwa households are cost burdened. If you use that United Way Alice number, I think we're approaching almost half of our community that is low income and cost constrained, but working. Also, our missing middle income development forces higher earners to compete with lower earners for the same units. And our current trend of one single family home per year is obviously not going to meet the projected need. So we're going to have to intervene to do something. So here's the recommendations in the study. One is to target incentives to specific areas. And so this is a map of the city that shows the areas that the studies identified. The blue are neighborhood conservation areas. The idea is to stabilize and protect these areas that include historic districts. Or districts where we're probably not going in a positive direction, but we don't have significant blight yet. The purple is rehabilitation areas. So areas with ancient housing stock or a greater need, degree of blight need. And so we should try to focus a larger share of resources here. And then the red are redevelopment areas that are suitable for transformative redevelopment into new residential or mixed use. So that includes Benita. That includes the development on Alta Vista. That includes the riverfront. We'll talk about the rail port location in a little bit. And that includes the, the Walsh School property. I think that's everything that's read on there. The next recommendation is to ramp up a nonprofit developer like Rippling Waters. Rippling Waters is, was originally kind of a, an offshoot of Legacy Foundation, and they did a lot of great work on rehabilitating buildings in our Main Street district. They've, they did the principal building. They did a few buildings on the 2 and 300 block of East Main. And they've put apartments into some of those, but they're trying to transition now into being a nonprofit housing development fund. They've seen that the private market's doing more of what they were doing downtown and that they want to try to branch out into a, a different area of service. And how we can ramp up their work and ramp up the work of folks like them. The study does recommend trying to have them participate in a purchase rehab resale program. And also have them be one of the agents involved in building our middle density infill development. The study recommends providing incentives for that middle density infill, market rate rentals and entry level ownership opportunities for multifamily development on existing lots. That would maximize existing public infrastructure. And it does have some recommendations about how we can do that zoning code updates, site prototypes, gap financing, et cetera. Really the site plan prototypes are something that I'm interested in, and there is going to be a recommendation about that later on in the study. The study has a, a section towards the end and it takes a column on the side and it looks at Chattanooga, Tennessee, where they did a, a missing middle site plan prototype program. And they had a architect design for the types of lots that they have in their inventory. So 50 foot wide vacant lots. They had them look at lots on the corner, lots in the middle of the block, lots with double frontage. And they just designed a few prototype site plans for those different categories that had more than one unit. So duplexes, duplex with an accessory dwelling unit, three little cottages, a bunch of different types of prototypes. And then they changed the zoning code to say, if you're going to build to one of those prototypes, you do not need any variance. Those are already automatically approved as long as you build to the prototype site plan. It's more efficient. It takes the risk out for the developer. And then they also recommend doing a higher degree of incentive for a pilot project to sort of prove the concept that that's a type of unit that the market can support. And so we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that's something that I'm definitely interested in making sure that we at least look at. Gap financing is a big one. We saw this with the Benita project and we kind of see it with just about everything. Is that when you're in a community like Atumwa, cost is a barrier to construction. Things are usually going to appraise for less than it costs to actually build them. And so looking at ways that we can bridge that gap to get development done with creating pools of funding, identifying certain lenders that are community development lenders. I know the Community First Credit Union is a community development lender already. But how we can look at programming and how we can look at pulling all the levers, I guess, I would say really to just make sure that we can address that gap. And there are some specific recommendations in the study that go further there. And then we had talked about the Neighborhood and Community Campaign. So trying to build a sense of pride, place and ownership in neighborhoods throughout Atumwa with either formal or informal community groups that build social capital, spread information and develop grassroots sort of opportunities, activities in the community. And the final area is workforce development. So this is about having a long-term interest in a healthy building trades sector in Atumwa. So how we can be a partner to the Atumwa Schools, Indian Hills and their building trades programs and how we can help secure a labor pipeline for building trades in Atumwa. Another thing that is interesting to look at is the the Iowa Prison Industries housing program, I forget the name right now. Whether we might want to be a community that would look at going to the, the job fairs and the folks that had participated in that program while they were incarcerated had learned skills in the building trades, whether we'd want to try to be an attractive place for those people to come and start a new life in Atumwa is definitely something that we might be interested in looking at as well in terms of the pipeline issue. And then we have identified some programs that we think could be useful either with ARPA funding, CIP, or some other types of funding to carry out some of these. The first I want to talk about is Make Atumwa Home. The idea here is to work with our community partners to present a package deal for somebody who wants to build a home. This is what we can provide as far as utility connections, discount or free. This is what we can provide as far as infill lots, whatever. And then also provide in the incentive package, a one-time $10,000 economic development grant at the time of closing for a home that, a new home that appraises at more than $125,000. And we did put in a request for ARPA funds to do that. We'd also be interested in looking for community partners that might be able to match that. But really we're competing with communities that have been doing this for a while that will give you some degree of economic development help to build a home. And they're beating us, so we should try to do it, too. This is the prototyping I was talking about. That's kind of an example of a prototype there. That'd be a two-story duplex unit. So it has one unit on the left, one unit on the right, and then it has an accessory dwelling unit in the back and space to park three vehicles. And so if we, I guess, space to park four vehicles, excuse me. So if we approved a site plan prototype or a list of site plan prototypes, somebody were to go through, they'd pick this one out, they'd say, well, this works on a 50 foot lot in the middle of the block. I want to buy this lot. It's in the middle of the block. I'm going to build this site plan. And we'd be able to go ahead and proceed right to permitting as opposed to a variance or anything like that. We could even look at, depending what the cost would be, do we go ahead and not just a site plan, but do we go ahead and pay for engineered building plans that are available for free? And we take that part of the cost out for developers as well. And then the Atumwa Block Challenge, the idea here is to take our existing healthy neighborhoods, Healthy Neighbors Program, which began three years ago, I think. which began three years ago, I think, and has not quite caught on in the direction we wanted. The idea was that we were going to provide direct matching grants to folks to make exterior home improvements. And the idea was that they would make these, they'd participate with their neighbors. They'd come together and fill out an application together. We've tried to incentivize that. We haven't gotten there. But we're looking at what Invest DSM is doing in Des Moines. They've got certain neighborhoods, Dogtown by Drake and a couple others, where they're providing up to $2,500 in match, but they're requiring that neighbors work together. Because the idea here is that we'll up our incentive, but we're going to require that folks work with their neighbors and we want to see changes that happen block by block.
Where does the money come for that program?
We have used CIP previously to give those grants. And we'd look at something like that. Or I don't know for sure if it qualifies. I think it probably would, but I don't know how many priorities we've got with the ARPA money. But the idea is, of course, that we try to recover that investment over time by these improvements being significant to the neighborhood and significant to values.
With this program here, is this like trying to improve homes? Or is this trying to improve like, like if somebody has an empty lot, trying to improve it, make it like a little community park type thing or something like that? How does that work?
I think that, I think it'd be, it could be open to a lot of things. I think that's an interesting one. If, you know, three people on the block submit their house and then there's also a vacant lot in the neighborhood and they say, you know, we want to make this just a small little mini park and we're going to take care of it and all the neighborhood children can play there. That'd be interesting. That'd be a really neat application. And I think that's something that could definitely be on the table for that as well. But we were specifically thinking homes.
And that Atoma Block Challenge could actually tie back into that recommendation for the, oh, the neighborhood and community campaign too.
Yeah.
And kind of start that, the outlier or the foundation of that program too.
Yeah. And we, and we see these each trying to connect. So the prototypes are trying to connect to that middle density goal. The direct grants to build a new home. We're trying to achieve that gap financing goal. This is going in a couple of directions, but definitely trying to touch on that neighborhood area. And then I think there's only one more of these, the Upper Story Housing Grant. We already have a really successful facade and roof grant program downtown. And we're looking at whether it'd be possible to set aside some designated money as match for the Upper Story Grant Application Opportunities that are coming up. The new downtown Upper Story Housing Program that IEDA has started, as well as the CDBG Upper Story Housing Conversion Program. We're really just looking at, could we set aside some money for $5,000 per unit match? And for helping to cover maybe 50% of the plan, drawing up the plans for these projects? Because I think that that would put us, first of all, competitive with what other communities have already got. Centerville gets these grants all the time over us and it's because they're providing $5,000 a unit match. And I think it's Centerville. Brad knows this program a lot better than I do. But really just how we can up our game there. We've got a lot of great apartments downtown and every one of them is occupied. So that tells me we've got a little bit more room to, to put some more.
Here again, where, where does the money come for the $5,000 per unit?
Again, that'd be either CIP or maybe a one-time share of that ARPA funds. And then there's one other area I do want to try to get some feedback on tonight. How's America? It's a federal initiative by the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness to leverage funding from the American Rescue Plan to lift, it has a goal of, I want to say, 200,000 families in the United States out of homelessness in two years. And the area that's served by the Rolling Hills Coalition, and specifically the city of Atoma, has been kind of targeted by HUD as one of just a few rural communities that they want to have participate in this program. It started out, they put it out there, they said, let's do How's America? They asked HUD to draw up priorities and HUD came back with, you know, 16 or 18 urban areas and submitted that to the White House. And the White House said, no, we want some urban, or the rural areas as well. And they went back to the drawing and they selected Atoma as an area that they want to have participate. And to participate, we'd need to have the council bought in on that. And we'd need the council to give staff the direction that we want to be leading in that area. And what participating would mean is that we would set goals for 2022 in two areas. The first area, we would set a goal for how many families or individuals we want to lift out of homelessness using a housing-first approach in our community. So we're doing a homelessness point in time count. Councilmember Galloway's been working a lot on having the YMCA help us with that on the 25th of, 26th of January. We're going to do in the 124-hour period, we're going to take a census of all folks who are experiencing homelessness in Waplo County. And hopefully that number could give us an idea of how we want to set that goal. And then the other is how many pipelines of affordable, how many units of affordable housing we can add to the development pipeline in 2022. So we would, if we were to participate, we'd pass a resolution saying that we are a participant community. And then we would go about setting our goals, tracking our goals. And then ideally by participating, we'd be able to leverage some additional federal funding by scoring points for being a How's America community.
So this would be HUD money?
Yeah. Or it's the U.S. Interagency Task Force on Homelessness. So if there are any other federal USDA, for example, as part of that as well. So.
And I'd just like to say, so I am very supportive of this program. I sit on the homeless coalition here in Atoma. And maybe I said the name wrong. I don't remember. But anyways, I say that because we've just recently changed it. But we did a point in contact unofficial count in June. Correct, Zach? June?
June or July.
June or July. But anyways, it was in this past summer. And our homelessness numbers rivaled that of Des Moines per capita. And it's, so it's something that needs to be brought to the forefront of people's minds. And so I am very supportive of this program and especially since we were reached out to.
Would this be us building housing? Or would this be like a homeless shelter? Or how does that look?
Yeah. So it would be a housing-first approach. So if folks, you know, come into an emergency shelter, the idea is that they'd be set up with somebody who's going to help them find permanent, stable housing, right? And for the second goal, it would be just how many units of new affordable housing we're going to get into the pipeline, ready to be constructed or already being constructed or finished, anywhere in that post-design and financing phase of development, how many we'd get in the pipeline this year.
Zach, I do have a question. Who would manage the housing? So would it fall under this since the city has to, you know, get the support? Who, would that be through Rolling Hills? Would that be through another agency?
So the, the first goal, how many folks we'd lift out of housing, out of homelessness? That would be folks that go through the process that the Rolling Hills Coalition has set up. So they call that waypoint number. They, the caseworker takes the information and then, you know, proceeds to put them into the social workers sort of, you know, list of cases to work. And then they, you know, they find a unit for that person. They try to support them to stay in that unit, that kind of thing. As far as the new units of housing that get built, that would cover any type of unit as long as it meets the affordable definition.
So just out of curiosity, because I've, I've actually talked with some of the folks through the Rolling Hills Coalition. Is this going to be something, to Councilperson Galloway's point, the management piece of this, is this going to be something that, for example, the, the financial pass-through, is that going to be managed through a local nonprofit? Or is, are those funds going to be funneled through Des Moines? And, you know, I'm not against asking outside people for help, but there, there seems to be from at least the limited meetings that I've sat in on that, there are certain pieces of that that definitely, we have a lot of local nonprofits in the community that could lend a hand in, in taking care of some of this. Are we going to lean upon the strengths of the people that we have in the community? Or are we just going to kind of outsource that all to the people up in Des Moines?
I'd like to see as much of it as possible be led locally. I would kind of see our Waplo County Housing and Homelessness Coalition Group as being sort of the organizing part of it. I'd see, you know, our regular grant writing partners working with us on the grants for the affordable housing. I don't know of any specific project that would come from CISS, the Rolling Hills Coalition, as part of this. They haven't approached me with anything. They're trying to get built here specifically. And I think that it would be mostly a way for us to be more competitive with existing programs, try to pursue some additional, maybe new federal programs, but that it'd still be the same traditional way that we go about doing those things. I don't think anybody else would take over that part of it.
Thank you.
Again, and I would just kind of echo what Councilperson Rowe's saying too, just maybe clarifying some of that information too. Because as you know, we've had some ups and downs with the current Rolling Hills, who is that money holder for this area?
And I would definitely like to see Waplo County to be the foundation with this. I, I don't see it going through Des Moines. It needs to be housed right here in town. If we're going to start something, we need to be the finisher as well.
I'd like to say, I have, I haven't sat in any of the meetings, but I've been involved with the homeless for a number of years. I was on the board when the Men's Homeless Shelter was here. And sometimes I'm led when I'm driving around. If I see one that I, I don't even know, I'll just stop, take him to my house, feed him supper, get him a hotel, help him find a job. But I really like this program. But, but when you, when you want to start something like this, it's a lot bigger hill than what people think. I mean, you have to have a lot of money, a lot of the time. And what I've noticed with the homeless that I've dealt with and been in the woods with and everything else is if we don't have a program to, to get to the root of the problem on why they got there, then a program like this still won't work. You know what I mean? When the Men's Shelter was here, I even called out the Indian Hills to see about them getting their GED and everything else. But I was just a board member. I was in charge. And they was on, it was $20 to take the test. Plus there was a grant for them to take it for free. And I tried to get that board to jump on board with that because more people will give when they see something's working, you know? So I'd like to know more information. If this company does something like that, either with the, the counseling or really figure out how they get to that problem and see what we can do as a community to help them not only get housing, but come back to feel like they feel like they're somebody again.
Yep.
Hey Zach, can I just touch too on Councilperson McIntyre? So that is such a great point because, and I would like to say that that coalition too is looking at things like that too. And there's a lot of that work being done already here too, which you know also. But I, I think that what you're saying too is about the case management after and being supportive there is extremely important for a program like this to succeed. And there's some great people and partners in our community who are really, who understand that and are trying to bring that forward too.
Cool.
All right. So that kind of brings us to the end of this, the housing side. There's only one more area after this. Atoma does have serious housing challenges as well as opportunities. We'll have an opportunity at a future meeting to look at that Atoma Housing Plan, make a recommendation to, to either, to adopt that plan. And then also make sure that we take action in year one so that we can stay on pace with the development goals that are in that plan. If we have any more questions about housing. All right. So we'll move on to the last area. That's economic development and planning and some projects that we currently have going on. I tried to narrow this list down and we still have that many, which I think is a good sign. But we'll try to go through these and we can take an opportunity to ask questions as well on these. So in the area of economic development, we have a lot of partners that work with us. We have our city staff. We have Greater Atoma Partners in Progress. The Atoma Legacy Foundation has been there. Utility providers, employers, other government entities, the county, the schools, regional planning. I should have put Main Street Atoma on here. There's a lot of folks that work in this area. And we're getting more and more on the same page and that's encouraging. One area that we're working on is the Greater Atoma Park Master Plan. Design Workshop was selected to lead a team of landscape architects and engineers to develop a master plan for Greater Atoma Park. And they're really going off of this concept map that was put in the comprehensive plan. But we're saying, look at this. This gives you some idea of the things that we want, but we're giving them an opportunity in the first task of this planning process to tell us what is best, to tell us this is bad, to tell us this is right, to tell us, you know, you need this, you didn't include this, you didn't think of this, you clearly don't have enough parking in this, all of those things. But we're asking them to design something based on feedback from all the stakeholders that'll be a, a vision for us going forward, that'll have phasing, that'll have priorities and it'll give us a chance to really take advantage of what a great asset we have in Greater Atoma Park. Square footage or square miles or whatever of park space per capita. We are far ahead of a lot of cities in the state, but we don't necessarily program that space or make use of that space to the, to the best of our ability. And this will really get us going on track to do that.
What, what kind of funding are they looking at to do this Greater Atoma Park Development Project? Where's that money going to come from?
So for the actual planning, Legacy Foundation has put in quite a, quite a bit. I want to say they were contributing $75,000, is that? And then there's another $125,000 that I think we're going to look at. Is it CIP for that? Yeah. For doing the actual planning. And then, of course, that'll give us cost estimates and phases and priorities and all those things that we can use to budget out how we're going to actually build each of those improvements after the study's done.
Yeah. And there's a lot with this. For example, where things lay out or could lay out, there may be something there currently that needs to be relocated. So it'll be, part of that will be a phased plan before we can do one thing. You may need to do something, you know, it might be like a precursor or predecessor for that. So that'll help lay that out so we can do it in an orderly fashion and, and build out a great regional asset.
All right. The next is the rail port relocation. This is a project that GoPip is really taking a leading role on. They're working with French Reniker to identify a more industrial location where we can locate, relocate the existing rail port and then free up quite a bit of space near downtown that could be suitable for some nicer, more mixed use, more downtown friendly development. And so not included in this is the property that they're looking at. That's still a little bit too sensitive to share publicly. But the area that we're looking at removing the rail port from is this area here. You can see this Atoma High School here. So this is all that area, Union Street, sort of right along the riverfront there, which is right now either industrial or vacant or underutilized. And how we can clear that rail port there, do the cleanup work that needs to be done, and then also make the improvements so that, for example, maybe we add a rail crossing here and now students that take that pedestrian bridge can have a nice straight walk up to school instead of, right now, taking that pedestrian bridge, taking the trail over to here, crossing up there and then coming back around. Just those small things, but also the big things like freeing up that space to make a new neighborhood and what could be a really neat place for people to be and live. Also, GoPip has been working with Bolton Mank on a study for the airport to develop a growth area master plan. The city, county and the utilities already agreed to share cost for that planning. It's going to look at existing infrastructure, anticipated needs, the condition of the market and what opportunities we have to attract new business out at the airport. It's also going to hopefully at least clarify and ideally settle, maybe once and for all, what the authority is of the FAA in having oversight over the property that we own right, out there right now. One thing that's been really frustrating for me is we've got two property owners or small businesses that are interested in getting property at the airport. They came to me more than eight months ago and asked if they could buy property at the airport. I asked them to get an appraisal done. They did that. And then we gave all that to the FAA and the FAA last week started to respond to the inquiry. So it's, it'd be great if we could clarify that issue with the FAA and we could actually make use of the property we own out there to benefit our business community. Also, the Church Street Historic Survey is another issue that GoPip's... Also, the Church Street Historic Survey is another issue that GoPip's looking at, asking John Deere to help with. We already did a historic survey of the Main Street Downtown District, and that historic survey has allowed us to pursue CDBG grant funding for facades and things like that downtown, without having to do individual Phase II environmental reviews for each project. We already have that information in the historic survey, and it makes it that much easier to do those projects, it makes it that much cheaper to do those projects. The idea is if we do the same thing on Church Street, then we can be positioned to get the facade work that we want to get done there, and really make Church Street not a side project for our downtown work, but as much a core part of our downtown work as Main Street. And really continue to bridge the gap between our south of the river, Main Street area, and our north of the river, Main Street area. This is the Bonita Project. Got through this in December. The council did approve a 20-year, 50% tax increment financing rebate for the 108 units of affordable housing on Bonita, and construction has begun in earnest. They benefited from some of the warm weather that we had into December, and they've actually got footings done for at least two of the buildings, and some of the framing done for at least one of the buildings already. And that project's going to be continuing into the spring and summer. This is also one that you'll probably see me come to you soon. This is a proposed commercial development in the outlot by Kohl's. The owner of the property's begun to preparing a development plan and preparing a financing package for a multi-tenant commercial strip center on that Kohl's Outlet. The property is in an existing urban renewal area and potentially eligible for tax increment financing. And we're looking at some possibilities, including a upfront economic development grant, 75,000, as well as a 10-year sliding scale abatement for that project. And as those details come together, we'll try to bring more of that to the council. But this would be an opportunity to bring some new retail to that area, and it looks promising.
Is that the property next to Kohl's that Kurt Hopkins owns?
This is another one that we may hear some more about soon. This is a low to moderate income housing development project that CBC Financial is looking at. They pursue the IFA, Iowa Finance Authority administers, the federal low-income housing tax credit program for the state of Iowa, LI-Tech. And they are going to pursue an application. They own, they own two properties, and they have the option to purchase on a third. They own the former Agassi School, they also own a greenfield location on Asbury that's already zoned for multifamily residential, and they have the option to purchase another greenfield location that we can't quite talk about publicly yet. But they're going to choose between those projects and submit an application. The council would be involved in providing a recommendation to IFA for that project. Also, if there were any other incentives that we'd look at for that project, those would obviously come to the council as well. But this would use federal tax credits to offset the cost of building units that are occupied by tenants in certain income categories, and they have to be affordable for at least a certain percentage of all those units.
Hey Zach, did Agassi School get listed on the registry?
Yes. Yeah, Agassi School, we did add on the National Register, well, we didn't add it, the Park Service added it, but we recommended, and it was added to the National Register of Historic Places. It's now the only property on the south side of Atumwa, but I'd like to see a few more listed there as well. And downtown, we've got a few things we're working on. Tonight, you just saw one of the CDBG Upper Story Housing Grants. You've got the downtown housing grant for Capitol Theater that we're going to be putting in this week. We've got CDBG facade applications for two properties on Market Street. We have our great existing programs that we referenced before with facade and roof. Main Street Atumwa completed the Ready to Recruit Program this year, and they've been going strong. And then we do anticipate a few future needs for these programs. One thing that we might bring soon is taking the existing facade program, keeping the rules pretty much the same, but increasing the award to $20,000 instead of $10,000. Most of the properties that we have left are the ones with the greatest need, or the ones with two facades. And also, that $10,000 amount hasn't been touched for a long time. I want to say at least early 2000s, and costs have gone up considerably for these projects since we actually set that $10,000 award amount. And then we're also going to be looking at some things with rear facades on Church Street, and how we can, on that side that faces the Oxbow, how we can make that parking area in those facades just more attractive. I think we could really serve a lot of, if the idea is that we're going to make our parks jewel, we're going to make our parks able to do sports tourism, those sorts of things, then we could have a lot of businesses that would be able to serve that area with outdoor seating, with access right off of the Oxbow, right? How we can make that area more attractive.
Are they, are they looking at, so with the, you said rear facade on Church Street? So once GoPip does their, their study, then that can lead into us being able to use the CB, or CDBG grants over there on that side of the river?
Yep. Yeah, we'd, we'd probably want to start looking at the traditional CDBG project. We'd try to get a lot of property owners invested in that one. We'd probably put together a nice big application and pursue one of those. It would take time, and it would take, you know, considerable match and planning and things like that, but the first step would be getting that survey done.
Is that parking lot behind there, is that owned by the owners of the buildings, or is that a city property?
I don't remember. I think that it's city property, but I don't remember for sure. I'll have to-
So if they redo the facades, we probably need to look at redoing the parking lot?
Yeah. Okay. The next one that's on here is the Vogel Development, the Alta Vista Development. Just call it anything that doesn't have a flying creature in the name. And, but this is the development of the old St. Joe property, and it has been delayed by the owner and developer. And I just wanted to provide an update here to answer questions, I guess, but at this point, the developer wouldn't realistically be able to complete the minimum improvements in the time permitted by the existing development agreement. So if the current developer were to want to do anything on that property now, realistically, they would have to renew, or change, or come to the council with a new development agreement, or find somebody else to do that work. And that's sort of where that is right now. There's nothing necessarily progress-wise to report, but they, there's, there's nothing going on, I guess.
Has, has there been any attempt to contact the current owner to see if they're willing to sell it to somebody else and just get out from underneath it, let somebody else do something with it?
There are community partners that are involved in, in doing those sorts of things. And I, I, I don't know how much I can say, other than that they're not moving toward selling it right now in any way.
Blackbird doesn't want to sell it, you mean?
They haven't signaled at all that they're going to sell it.
Yeah, and aside from any other agreements or anything else outside of what they have with the city, there isn't any motivation that they would have to sell that. You know, they, they purchased it, it's like anyone else that purchased property. I mean, Zach mentioned the Bonita property that had been purchased and resold several times and sat vacant for over 20 years before we finally had something happen with that. It is a prime opportunity for residential, and why the previous city council, and I don't even know how many, four or five years ago, had approved moving forward with this particular development and had brought in partners to assist with that. So I think there's definitely an interest in seeing that happen. You know, one thing not to forget with this was the old hospital that was in need of, of being razed, and that was a primary part of this project, aside from the future opportunity, was to get that, that building down safely and not have, you know, that derelict property up. So that was one key part of this. The next part is to see what we can do. If there was anybody that was interested in purchasing that property, and we had a different agreement in place, the city's not locked into anything, so we've got, you know, anything wide open at that point to work with, whoever that might be. I guess that's the, the positive way of looking at this.
Oh, I will say one thing, this is thanks to Philly, did tell me this last week. One thing for anybody that doesn't know is, city has nothing invested in that, really. Like, we didn't pay to have the building tore down or anything like that. So it's not like we have money invested in that, it's just an empty lot at this point.
Just time and hopes and-
Hopes and dreams.
Empty lot and empty promises right now.
That's better than empty wallets.
There you go.
Also, the Bridgeview Hotel. Last fall, the city entered into a development agreement to complete a cobblestone hotel and suites to serve as the convention center hotel for the Bridgeview. And we're pending closing on that property. We're still doing some due diligence and environmental review, but the expectation is still for that project to begin this year. And those are all the projects I've got to present, and that's also, I think, everything here. So we can do open discussion, questions, anything that you might have.
I just want to say thank you, Zach, for coming in tonight and talking and presenting to us. I really appreciate it and learned a lot.
Thank you.
That's been very helpful.
It's a big one, hopefully not all the work sessions are this long.
Well, you set the pace now.
Thanks for that, Zach.
Yeah, I tried to set a quick pace, but- After seven, I'm sorry.
Do you think you can stretch out the landfill and the recycling center tours this long?
The solid waste meetings will stretch out plenty long.
Yeah, a quick reminder, that is tomorrow night at 4:30. For any of you that are able to make it, we do need to have a quorum of this body, a quorum of the county commissioners to be able to hold that meeting. And that's here in 108 downstairs.
I guess the only other comment that I would like to make is, I mean, it's obvious there's some great things happening in Atumwa. My concern is how many people generally in Atumwa are even aware of all this stuff going on? Because I don't see a lot of this stuff in the paper. And so what can we do to let the citizens of Atumwa know that there's all these projects going on, and that there is positive things coming in the next two to three years? Because I, I think that's really important to educate the community on the great things that are in the works. And I know sometimes they can't always say some of that stuff because of, like, especially some of GoPip's stuff, when they're working with people, new businesses coming to town, all that. I realize sometimes they can't say a lot at a certain point in time, but I really think it'd be helpful if the city or somebody could do a pretty good marketing campaign to get some of this information out. Now, maybe I'm just missing some of it, but there's a lot of stuff here tonight that I've not heard of. And I just think there's probably a lot of other people in Atumwa that don't know all this great stuff that you've run over with us tonight. So is there any plans to broadcast this and educate the community on some of these great things that's happening?
Yeah, so a couple of these are things that are new, they wouldn't have been discussed at other council meetings before. But the point is still true. I think that we've, as a city staff, been working on ways of just promoting the wins a little better, getting the word out a little better. I don't think that there's any significant blockage of information at the courier, at any of our news sources. I think they do a great job of being available, so I think it's really all on us. But yeah, I think using our press releases more, using our social media more, being out in the, in the field more. The Parks Plan is a great one, so we're going to look at a lot of different approaches to collecting public input, even hearing from young people and children about what they want from the parks. But just getting out in the community more is definitely a goal. And then also, I know I've talked before with Councilmember Galloway, but just looking at ways that we can make these meetings more accessible to people, childcare, or whatever we can do to, to make the meetings a little bit easier for folks to get to will help a little bit too. And using our boards and commissions to, to get information out too.
Well, great job. Really, it's, it's wonderful information, and appreciate you taking the time to educate us. And I think if we meet with some of the other departments over the next few months, that's going to be very beneficial, especially for those of us who are pretty new on the council and mayor. It's, it's been very helpful. So thank you for putting all the work together to make this PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yeah, thank you all.
Everybody else got some big shoes to try to fill. Good job, Zach.
Does anybody have any other business or any other things they want to discuss? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Row.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And if anybody wants to learn more about the sports complex, it'll be, there'll be a meeting-